Like to move forward, though we don't have a full body, uh, we do have a quorum. So we will ask you that. Uh, first item on the agenda, agenda is the approval of the February seventh, twenty twenty-three minutes. Uh, can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
That was you?
Yes.
Uh, sorry, Jim. Moved by Jim, is there a second? Second by Mr. Ballard, a battle, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion carries. First on the agenda, we have a planning commission case for the Illyria Block Development LLC, P O Box six nine six, Illyria, Ohio, requesting a replat for said parcels. Um, and we do have one of our members that's gonna recuse themselves from the discussion as well as voting. Uh, would you like to go ahead and disclose?
Yes, I'm gonna recuse myself.
All right, thank you Barry. So Barry will be recruiting himself from the discussion and voting. Uh, the first thing, if there's any representative from the Illyria Block Development LLC, if they could come forward, please? If you could state your name and address for the record.
Stephanie Mercado, uh, twenty seventy Arthur Avenue, Lakewood.
Welcome Stephanie, uh, good to see you again. Um, as you may have heard, we have a quorum here, but we do not have a full body. Would you still like to proceed with this case today?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Why don't you give us an overview of what this request is?
Um, we're requesting to do a lot consolidation of, um, parcels that are, uh, that, that, um, cover our downtown Illyria redevelopment project, um, specifically parcels that cover the Dixon Building, the Robinson Building, and, um, the site formerly known as where Vic's was at. Um, previously, the city, uh, approved a street vacation of merchants' alleys. So we're looking to consolidate all of the parcels in addition to the vacated merchants' alley, um, into one parcel, which will greatly help the project move forward through design review and other approvals necessary to help the project move forward.
Thank you. If you could stay there, uh, at the microphone, there may be some questions. Um, and then can we have a staff report? Uh, Chief Farkas, do you have anything on this, or is just Engineer Schneider?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll just, for the record, read the parcels that are proposed to be consolidated for the record, and I'll briefly go into the zoning and then give my staff findings. Um, the parcels that are in the request are zero six dash two six dash zero seven seven dash zero 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 dash zero zero eight, which is four seventeen Broad Street, zero six dash twenty six dash zero seventy seven dash zero 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 dash zero zero five, which is four thirteen Broad Street, zero six two six oh seven seven zero 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 six, which is four oh five Broad Street, zero six two six oh seventy seven zero 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 seven, which is four oh one through four oh five Broad Street, zero six two six zero seventy seven zero 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 dash zero zero one, which is eleven Curt Stetter Way, and zero six two six oh seventy seven zero 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 dash zero zero two, which is one hundred Washington Avenue. Uh, the proponents requesting to combine multiple parcels consisting of fourteen individual sublots into one distinct parcel, as listed herein, creating a new lot which will consist of point eight five eight four acres of land. Note, revised information submitted is in regards to Engineering Department's request for possible easements or underground utilities and right-of-way concerns. It is currently zoned business downtown, which is found in chapter eleven fi- uh, fifty-eight of codified ordinance recommendations. The above information complies with the spirit and intent of the zoning code. If granted, the proposed alterations to the site will be required to undergo a separate design review and zoning process assuring compliance is achieved. I will defer to the Engineering Department regarding any potential easements or right-of-way concerns regarding the proposal. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief Farkas. Engineer Schneider?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, in regards to the lot consolidation, uh, engineer had, engineer does not have an issue with consolidating the lots. Uh, we do recognize that the, the city's utilities that run through this area are not of significance to the city and therefore can be abandoned and, and, uh, taken over by the property owner if need be. Uh, there may be private utilities in there that we don't know about. I'm fine with moving forward with the consolidation, but in the future, we're going to have to look to make sure that if there are anything, if there is a private utility that's remaining after, uh, the design is, that, uh, they may need to come back for easements, but other than that.
Thank you.
I'm good.
Thank you, Mr. Schneider. Any questions from the committee, uh, to either the staff or to the project manager? All right, um, proponents and opponents? Are there any other proponents? Are there any other proponents? Are there any, any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Are there any opponents? Any opponents? Uh, well, as you mentioned, Ms. Mercado, you were comfortable with us moving forward with the quorum we have. Uh, so if there's no further questions, I'll entertain a motion to approve the request for a replat for the said parcels.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Derrick, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Jim. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. And we have one abstention.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next on the public hearings, we have, uh, the first is Watch Me Grow Learning Center, and I believe this was one that we tabled from the last meeting. Um, and this is eight three six Sandalwood Drive, requesting a conditional use permit to operate a type A childcare facility. Um, if we have someone from eight three six from, uh, Watch Me Grow Learning Center, if they could please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record, please.
Hi, my name is Nida Stevens, um, and I live at eight thirty-six Sandalwood Drive, and I'm currently licensed with Watch Me Grow Learning Center, uh, operate, Watch Me Go Learning Center childcare.
Um, as I've mentioned before today, we don't have a full body, but we do have a quorum. Would you like to proceed with your hearing today?
Yes.
Okay. All right, we will, uh, if you wanna give us a quick overview of what this project is, just to bring our, um, everybody up to speed, and then we'll have a staff report.
Hi, my name is Nida Stevens, and I am currently a type B childcare provider, which I am licensed through Ohio Job and Family Services. And today I'm asking for a permit to become a type A, which consists of one through twelve kids. Currently, I have one to six kids. Um, I lived in Illyria all my life. I feel that there's a need for childcare, 'cause we, I do nights and weekends. A lot of centers don't do nights and weekends. That's the biggest thing right now, nights and weekends that no family can get or whatever. So I'm one of the few who does it, and that's why I'm asking for more children, I mean, more, be able to have more children because of these situations. And I deal with a lot of single parents, even with both parents, but a lot of single parents who have to work those non-traditional hours of three to eleven, eleven seven, seven seven, from seven to seven in the morning and things like that. So that's why I'm asking for it.
All right, thank you for that. Um, Chief Farkas, if you could give your staff report. And if you could bring us back to, uh, when we reviewed this at the last planning commission meeting, there were some specific issues that we had that we wanted to table and, and work with, um, as Stevens on before today's meeting. Could you give us an update on that as well?
Mr. Chair, through you. Uh, the site plan Mr. Ballard had up on the screen was, uh, the revised plan that came in unfortunately after I had already prepared my memo. So Mark, if we could keep that up there as, um, a point of reference, please. Um, as indicated in the last meeting, uh, I had questions in regards to setback. I brought it to the board's attention. Uh, specifically, if you go to page two of my report, uh, items one through eight, our code indicates that they have to be substantially established. I'll read the first one, which is the minimum lot area shall be thirty thousand square feet. I previously calculated this lot to be, uh, eight thousand one hundred square feet. Number two, the minimum lot frontage shall be one hundred and seventy-five feet. The current frontage on Sandalwood is sixty. Last page, uh, the minimum building setback from the front property line shall be fifty feet as the site plan indicates, Mark, could you scroll up a little bit? Indicates thirty foot, six inches, fifty feet is required. Um, it also goes into the side yard setbacks requirements. Um, it goes into the parking on number four, says minimum parking spa, setback shall be fifty feet from the property line. The setback is currently at thirty. Um, and that pretty much was our concerns in regards to the setback dimensions. Now that we have that, the comparables, what the code requires and what you see before you, I will leave in your hands. Thank you.
Mayor, I just step away just for a short emergency, so I'm gonna just kinda hopefully follow through. Um, we've got staff report, we've got the proponents' report. Any questions that anybody's gonna have?
Yeah, uh, all right, uh, for Darryl, so, so in light of all the, uh, information that she presented today that you didn't have last time, your, your position still remains the same?
Uh, yes. Through you, Mr. Taylor. Yes, the, the, unfortunately, due to the requirements of our ordinance, the key word is substantially exists. And I leave that on your scale of what's before you and what the code requires. Unfortunately, due to what I see before me, it's minimal and change. These numbers pretty much match my estimations of my first review using the county website measuring tool. They're within inches, so nothing has changed drastically.
Thank you. Any other questions?
I have a question.
Sure, go ahead.
So, um, the ones that you're doing, i- isn't that for like centers and not for home daycares?
Go ahead.
Uh, through Mr. You, Mr. Taylor. There is no difference in regards to the setbacks for residential or commercial. In a commercial footprint, the zoning, of course, would be different, which wouldn't require these types of restrictions as it would be permitted outright. Since you have to have a conditional use, these are the setbacks that we are governed by. And if it was in a different zoning district, it's not required to have a conditional use. It's permitted flat out as is, you can do it. Anything in a residential, unfortunately, is not as such. I hope that helped. Because of the zoning, you just can't do it. You have to go through this process, and it's geared specifically to make sure you have all these buffers in place.
Any other questions from the planning commission? Uh, we're not gonna be able to vote till the mayor comes back, but are there any other proponents that would like to speak? Any other proponents? Any other proponents? Any opponents? Any opponents? Any opponents? As far as I can go, guys, we have to wait for the mayor, um, otherwise, he's here. So because of the quorum and the shortage, et cetera, we need everybody. So we'll take a three-minute recess, and I'll follow up and check on him in a second.
All right, here we go. So, um, it's interesting, you know, um, the reason I had to step away, uh, is, uh, I, I'm playing single dad this morning, so it's ironic that we're reviewing a childcare case, and I gotta step away, uh, to address some things with my eighteen-month-old baby. Um, so I definitely recognize the need for this, uh, service, and, uh, from my standpoint, this is something we need to address within our, our long-term rezone planning, uh, because I think that there are some unique conditions that make this inappropriate. Uh, but I think for the most part, most of these are just very common sense. Hey, you gotta fence up for the kids, you gotta way to make sure people, you know, they're not creating traffic congestion on the streets. So I think these are, are things that we should be supporting as a city, um, especially when they're not disruptive to a community. Um, but I understand right now, the way our codes are written, uh, this is our process. So I'll call for the question, and again, this is for, uh, the request for a conditional use permit to operate a type A childcare, uh, facility for Watch Me Grow Learning Center. Um, and can I get a motion to get it on the floor?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Hubbard, is there a second? Second by Mr. Tedrow. All right, it's been moved and probably second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the conditional use permit to operate a type A childcare facility, say aye. Aye. All those opposed, nay.
Nay.
And were there any abstentions?
Only for the record, because like, we should probably take a roll call vote.
Okay, we'll do a roll call vote. Go ahead, Mr. Ballard.
Dan Battle. Barry Hubbard.
Nay.
Jim Oderko.
Nay.
Uh, Derek Tedrow.
Nay.
Mayor Woodfield.
Yay. So, uh, the motion does, uh, it did fail, so your next steps is you can go to city council and request their approval of this. Uh, you got a council person right next to you, if you wanna do some lobbying beforehand and get his, his preference on, on things. And, uh, but thank you so much for your patience with the process. Next on the agenda, we have Snappy Lake LLC, one oh six Bell Avenue, requesting a variance pursuant to chapter eleven sixty-two oh point oh three of the Illyria Codified Ordinance to approve the dumpster location being next to the building. Is anyone from Snappy Lake LLC here? Can come on up to the microphone, please? Please state your name and address for the record.
Hello, my name is Mo Zayed, one oh six Bell Av- Illyria, Ohio.
All right, do you wanna give us an overview of the project?
Sure, sir, we're building a, uh, gas station, and we have a situation with the dumpster. Uh, we can't sit, uh, put it in, uh, behind the building. It's very narrow for the truck to get back there, so we need a variance to put it beside, uh, next to the building.
Thank you, Chief Farkas, do you have a report on this?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. Uh, the proponent is requesting a variance from Illyria Codified Ordinance, section eleven sixty-two point oh three, to install a dumpster in the front yard of the property in lieu of the rear yard as required by code. The site is currently zoned business automotive, the requirement of which can be found in the Illyria Codified Ordinance, chapter eleven sixty-two. The purpose of the B A O district is to accommodate and encourage those businesses established offering accommodations, services, goods to the public. The business automotive-oriented district is most appropriately located adjacent to freeways, interchanges, intersections, and major thoroughfares. The principally permitted uses include automotive filling stations, automotive repair services, sales, convenience business, drive-in facilities, fast foods, off signs, et cetera. The accessory uses can be located in section eleven sixty-two oh three and are as follows. Any use customary and incidental to the permitted use, signs as regulated in eleven seventy-three and eleven seventy-four. Accessory uses other than signs and fences of parking facilities should be located in rear yard only and located not closer than six feet from any lot line and covering not more than thirty-five percent. Staff findings, the proposed dumpster indicated with screening is in the mid-north portion of the site. The distance from the north property line is indicated to be five feet to the dumpster enclosure. For Illyria Codified Ordinance, section eleven sixty-two oh three, accessory structures must be located in the rear yard and no closer than six feet from the property line. Recommendation, I am in favor of the request, as requiring the dumpster to be in the rear yard would be an undue hardship based on the lot's existing configuration and limited rear yard. Uh, to further expound on this, this is a, what I call a postage stamp lot. It is very small when they put the business in years ago. It, it has no wiggle room. They literally have no option other than to put the dumpster in this location. I would much rather see it in an area where it can be easily maintained and accessed, more so than crammed in the back where it could become neglected. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief Farkas. Um, any, uh, we, as you may have heard, we don't have a full body here, but we do have a quorum. Would you like to proceed? All right, are there any questions from the commission? All right, are there any other proponents?
I have one.
Go ahead, Derrick, go ahead.
It, the, uh, it says the existing, what exactly is the existing building? Is that the, is that the old car wash on Lake Avenue?
No, right next to what used to be, uh, towing, towing, I believe, automotive.
Is it on the corner, uh, is it fifty-seven and?
Yeah.
Or one thirteen?
Bell Avenue.
One thirteen.
Lake, and then?
It's an old service garage, right?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Um, are there any other proponents? Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Any opponents? Any opponents? All right, hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve, uh, Snappy Lake LLC, uh, at one oh six Bell Avenue for a variance, uh, to approve the dumpster location being next to the building.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Hubbard, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Tedrow, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Those opposed, nay. Were, were there any abstentions? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Next on the agenda is Midwest Trend Sitters, one three one William Street, requesting a conditional use permit to operate a salvage yard. Is there anyone from Midwest Trend Sitters here? Uh, please approach the microphone and give your name and address for the record.
Good morning, my name's Joseph Youssef. Uh, I'm currently located at seven two one eight Case Road in North Ridgeville.
Thank you, and, um, as you may have heard, we do not have a full body, but we do have a quorum. Would you like to proceed?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Um, would you like to give us an overview of the project, please?
Uh, we are, I'm sure most people are familiar with this project at this point. We, uh, have been trying to reopen the old Blue Star Recycling on William Street. Uh, we had previously attempted to, I don't know where the miscommunication was, but we're under the impression that we had to rezone a whole bunch of stuff, and found out that essentially the entire property is already zoned correctly. So we, uh, are just filing for a conditional use permit at this point. Um, I'm not a hundred percent sure how a conditional use actually works. I've just been told by multiple people that that's the next step in the process to get going.
Thank you. Chief Farkas, you wanna give your report?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This one is going to be lengthy, and as for the board's FYI, we have received multiple emails against this concern. Some of those opponents may be here present, I'll let them speak for themselves. But I'm gonna read my report, give a little bit of history, and then go into the new findings, just so it, it's in a nice, tight box. Case number two zero two three zero zero one zero 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 dash eleven, William Street and associated parcels listed herein. I listed the parcels zero six two five oh six eight one oh two dash twenty, zero six two five dash zero six eight one oh two eighteen, zero six two five oh six nine one oh two dash zero zero five, zero six two five oh six nine one oh two zero zero six, and zero six two five oh six nine one oh two nineteen. The request, the proponent is requesting a conditional use to accommodate a proposed junkyard for the parcels listed as required per section eleven sixty-four point oh four B of the Illyria Codified Ordinance. I have listed each parcel in the request and the corresponding zoning designation for the board's use. As you can see, most of the parcels are zoned heavy industrial with the exception of zero six two five oh six eight one oh two dash eighteen. I found this a bit puzzling as this was on the application request and is a distinct, separate parcel from the area in question. This particular parcel is zone BG. I can only assume it could be a typo on the application submittal. I'll go into it further in my report. History, the site, one thirty-one William Street, formerly known as Blue Star Recycling, was in operation for years, providing recycling services for junk, scrap metal, et cetera, for Illyria and the surrounding communities until its closure a few years ago. The site is currently located on multiple parcels of overlaying zoning districts, R T H and H I, which are grandfathered in and considered non-conforming per chapter eleven seventy-one of the Illyria Codified Ordinance, as the past function slash use of the business is not permitted for the current zoning district, R T H, and best fits a classification of the junkyard as defined herein. The stipulation of maintaining, uh, maintaining a non-conforming status is defined in chapter eleven seventy-one of the codified ordinance, specifically, section eleven seventy-one point oh four, reconversion of a non-conforming use, of which states, "No building, structure, or premises where a non-conforming use has ceased for more than twelve consecutive months or which has been changed to a use in a district in which it is located shall again be devoted or converted to a non-conforming use." Note, many adjacent parcels not listed in the request are incorporated into the one thirty-one William Street site or the existing building footprint in our currently zoned residential two-household district. This notation will come into play later in my report. I've listed the zoning for heavy industrial, I'll forego reading the entire section as I assume the board has digested it. Um, I've also gone into the definition of a junkyard, eleven twenty-five forty-five. I've indicated the zoning for the R T H, I've listed the corresponding parcels. I've also listed the zoning for the business general district for that parcel that was in the application. I listed what is permitted, and the findings is where I really wanna get into, uh, which I assume may raise questions. The current site has a building located on and over multiple parcels of land, which have two distinct zoning districts. I have listed the heavy industrial parcels above as they are part of the applicant's request. I have also listed the residential parcels of land for the board's use as these parcels indicated would inadvertently be a part of the request as they have an existing structure placed on site, of which crosses and overlaps into the residentially zoned parcels of land. See map? Could you scroll up, Mark? As you can see from this, I put an X on the parcels of interest, and you can see the yellow, yellow highlighted rectangle is the building that is part of inadvertently the request, but this building on parcels zero six, zero seven, zero eight, zero nine, ten are all zoned residential zone districts. Though the request is only for specific parcels, the building itself crosses over two distinct parcels and zoning districts. Therefore, if you grant the approval, you would inadvertently reestablish the non-conforming use by doing it just based on the sheer building configuration. I'll continue, march on. Um, the parcels, my recommendations, uh, let's see, oh, I'll back up, I'm sorry. It should also be noted that I have mentioned in past reports regarding the site that many of the parcels lack an address and are assigned a current sublet number per the Lorain County Otter's website. A lot consolidation replant is needed, including any adjoining, abutting parcels that are to be incorporated into the scope of the project. Prior to this taking place, a rezoning of the residential parcels must be completed as to assure the proper districts is established and one new parcel address is properly assigned to the new zoning classification, if approved. The process can be completed in conjunction with the conditional use request and can be submitted via separate applications, but in tandem, if properly coordinated, as to expedite the overall process. This process will evoke multiple needs for variances being required due to the close proximity of the site to an existing abutting residential district. This will require a separate submittal of an accurate, dimensionized site plan, including the current setbacks of all structures to the property lines once a replat consolidation review is completed. My recommendations, the parcels listed in the applicant's, applicant's request have a pre-existing structure already established that cross over onto other parcels not listed in the application, but the building is partially located in a but, a pre-established residential two-household district. If the condition using, is granted, it would automatically reestablish a non-conforming use based on the building's physical location, therefore absorbing the parcels of land in buildings that are zoned residential to household district in this request. This would also include the location, thus avoiding any variance needed as previously mentioned. Based on the information herein, I am not in favor of the request. In short, uh, for the board's use, it's a workaround from the past review we completed when they wanted to go for all the parcels of request. They're targeting the specific parcels that are zoned heavy industrial, that would permit a junkyard conditionally. But unfortunately, due to the current building location, you can't have both. The building crosses over into a residential district. You can't cut the building in half and say, we're only gonna use this part for the junkyard, and this part's gonna be re- zoned residentially. So inherently, the building itself is non-conforming. It needs to be rezoned as a whole. If there was no building there, and they wanted to do these individual parcels and build something, that's a different story. But the way it's laid out now, it will not work.
Thank you, Chief Farkas. Um, so hearing that, um, would you like to withdraw your application, or would you still like to move forward with the hearing today?
I mean, if I'm gonna be declined, I, I, my lawyer said that, uh, because the only residential part of the property is the parking lot, he said we could use that, he said it's just gonna be used as a parking lot, and the parking lot is residential from what I see, but I'm not.
Yeah, if you wanna pull that back up, Mark, you wanna scroll down some? I think he's referring to oh seven, oh eight, oh nine, and, and ten. Is that what you're referring to, Chief Farkas, in terms of a part, part of the parcel includes the building?
Yes, Mr. Chair, through you. Those parcels are currently zoned residential to household district, and that shot shows the building overlapping into both zoning districts. The one to the right is heavy, and the one to the left is residential.
Thank you. So that's what we're referring to.
Okay, yeah, with the, the, uh-
Yeah, the, I didn't have this, a photo. I just had like a, it was like a map with lines on it. I didn't have a distinct kind of photo of what it was that it was coming over on. But yeah, that's, my lawyer said that it shouldn't be an issue. But if you're going to decline, I should probably withdraw my request, I guess.
I was just asking if you wanted to withdraw based on the information from the staff report?
My life depends on this place, so I kind of can't.
Okay.
I don't want to withdraw.
Okay. Well, we can proceed, we can proceed. Is there any, uh, questions that the panel has for the staff or the project manager?
Uh, through you, Mayor, I'm, Darrell. And you're, I mean, I know it's not your job to guess or predict or whatever. Is there anything that could be done where they, I mean, do you have a solution? Is there a solution to move forward so this project can move forward?
Mr. Chair, through you, yes. Rezoning of the site as originally indicated last year of all parcels due to the current configuration of the buildings and the lots. I don't see any other way around it.
Is that, is that something we can entertain or?
I think, and I'm being, I'm trying to be, I'm not saying this in a disrespectful manner. I'm just kind of repeating what I heard. We've already rejected the rezone as a city. And this was their attempt to work around that by just saying, "Well, how about just these parcels right here?" And so what should have done has already been done and been rejected. That's my opinion, I guess, based on the information I heard. All right, are there any other proponents? Are there any other proponents? Any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Any opponents, please come to the microphone, please? One, one at a time. Okay. Please state your name and address for the record.
Tiffany Reedy, 113 William Street. I'm going to be honest with you guys. This, to me, also is a loophole that they're looking for. We went over this for three months last year about how the neighborhood does not want this here anymore. They have been there over 100 years and multiple generations of our neighborhood have put up with the dust, the noise, the odors, the unauthorized burning, all the things that come along with that being there. That came in when it was the Industrial Revolution, basically. And it's no longer that. It's 2023 when we're talking about zero carbon footprint, sustainability, cleaner things. And the fact remains that both Mr. Youssef and Ms. Kaufman are non-residents who are trying to force us to have this in our neighborhood. Their records, their actions, their history speaks for itself. Neither one of them have kept either place up to code. Neither one of them have gone out of their way to keep it clean and follow the rules. And this gentleman, it was shown, is no different. And he is delinquent in taxes and now looking to escape what's been created out there and come out here. And I can't, I'm, I'm struggling to believe that despite what he's saying, he's going to follow through. His business he already has does not do that and he's simply going to switch places. And that means the city is also going to lose revenue because if he's not paying taxes out there on the property already owned, he's not going to pay them out here. But he's also not, there's going to be no buffer zone. There's going to be no protection for the residents that live there. I have children and there's many small children in this neighborhood. And for the life of me, I cannot get these children. I keep mine out. They're older, that's different. But we have lots of small children under 10 years old that love, and I mean love, like a magnet, to go into that parking lot because that's not even secure. It's wide open. I had to fight tooth and nail last year to get the bins removed that were being left in the parking lot filling up with rainwater, creating a drowning hazard. At the end of the day, I actually, just so you guys know, I'm actually being proactive as one of the residents in this neighborhood. I have a meeting tomorrow with Children's Services Board because I'm actually seeking out other alternatives to put here so Ms. Kaufman still gets her money because I want everybody to win. But we want something better in our neighborhood, something that benefits the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please state your name and address for the record.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Cheryl Wright, 110 William Street, Alaria. I'm basically going to summarize what I spoke to council with last year. And that is that I'm not against progress for the city. I'm for businesses being in the city. That's essential, evidently, for the city to thrive. I understand that. My concern lies here with protecting the safety of the residents. The codes, as are written right now, that Mr. Farkas had referred to, the current codes, not the grandfathered ones, would not allow, it doesn't have proper buffer zones. I mean, we all remember Carlisle Township and the similar problem that happened with the fire out there. Imagine if that happened on William Street. If you see how close the houses are there. I'm in one of those houses. There are residents in all of those houses. And I'm just asking for due consideration. I'm not against Mr. Youssef's business, the type of business that he wants to run, just the location that they're asking it to be in. That's my only concern is for the safety of the citizens. That's primary. And I just ask for your consideration with regard to that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Are there any other opponents? Any other opponents? Any other opponents? I did receive a letter from the councilman of this ward, Andrew Lippian. And I'm not going to read the whole thing. But I'll just read the last sentence, which is, "Please consider the interests of the residents that he represents in their respectful request to not move ahead with this conditional use permit. I'm sure there are other options that can be explored outside for the uses as a salvage and junkyard. We should work together to find a solution which residents wouldn't mind living next to." He says a bunch of other stuff, but I'm not going to read all of that. Because a lot of it, I think Tiffany and her comments already has secured it. But any other questions from the committee? All right, hearing none. I'll entertain a motion and get it on the floor for Midwest Trendsetters, 131 William Street, requesting a conditional use permit to operate a salvage yard.
So moved.
It's been moved, is there a second?
Seconded.
Has been moved and properly seconded. Now, we're going to vote on whether to approve the request for a conditional use permit to operate a salvage yard. All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, nay.
Nay.
And were there any abstentions? All right, the motion fails. You do have the right to now go before City Council and request as well. And you're welcome to work with the staff in terms of if you ever decide to explore other options within the city, we're here to partner and help figure that out.
I do just go on record. I don't, I can't believe I have to address this at a conditional use hearing, but I have fully current on every single tax that I owe. I've never been late on my property tax. I owe $0 to the IRS. If I need to supply my social security number to anybody, they could check, but they're looking up the wrong Joseph Youssef.
Yeah, I respect that. I totally respect that. I understand. Thank you for sharing that. All right, as I mentioned before, I actually have another commitment I have to get to. But Jim is going to facilitate this last piece? Oh, one of the members. Who, Derek, you comfortable facilitating the rest? And we do have a quorum, so you can vote on the next item. But I'll pass it over to you, Derek, and good luck with the rest of the meeting.
All right, let's see. Okay. Next, next item on the agenda is Villas of the Valley Development LLC, 1100 Gulf Road, Alaria, Ohio, requests to establish a new subdivision. And, uh, that variance on this, on this next page is also a part of this? Or is that separate? One at a time? Okay. Do we have anyone from Villas of the Valley? Representation? Please step forward, state your name and address for the record.
And Mr. Tedrow, after he does that, we need to again caution him whether he wants, they want to move forward with a quorum.
Quorum.
But he can introduce himself.
Yep.
Dave Kohler, 130 West Streets, Borough Street, Hudson.
Mr. Kohler, we don't, we don't have a full board here today, but we do have a quorum. So would you like to proceed with the, with the hearing?
Well, that's a, that's a difficult question under the circumstances. Today, when we got here, we not had privy to Mr. Farkas's review or staff report prior to just now. So I know there are a number of questions there that were raised, many of which I think we can answer today. I don't know that we can answer them, though, to his total satisfaction because some of them may require some, some drawings or legal descriptions to be supplied. This project is a, is a large project. There's a lot of components to it. And on projects of this size and scope, you know, time is our enemy. And we've got a lot of things to do. I mean, we're here for today is preliminary plan approval, just to solidify what our preliminary development plan is going to be. There's a tremendous amount of engineering detailing and so forth that has to be done going forward. We have multiple permits that we have to submit to about seven different agencies besides the city itself. All those are very time consuming. But we can't go to that next stage until we get through preliminary plan approval and say that, okay, this plan, this preliminary plan as it's laid out is the basis under which we're going to design, come back to the city again, through all the departments, engineering and so forth, to put hard lines or actual approved plans from all these agencies in front of you to say, "We're, we're doing that." So we would very much like to move forward today because, again, we've a long time getting here. We started this process about this time or earlier last year. And we need to get through a preliminary plan approval so we can really get into the meat of the project here. So.
Okay. All right, that being said, then we'll, you'd like to move forward? Then with the quorum that we have?
Um.
Obviously, there's no guarantees.
Right. Well, I guess our concern is that if, if the body doesn't, if the quorum doesn't approve it today, my understanding is it requires unanimous approval from the members that are here. Then I'm not sure where that leaves us at that point.
All right. Are you, I mean, would, do we like to, would you like to take the opportunity to board this or table it to, to another date? Or does that not work for you as well?
I have a suggestion. Why don't you listen to the reports from engineering, fire, and, and, and building? And then you can table it before we take the vote just so you understand what, what concerns there are, which I understand are quite a few.
Okay. So I guess what we're saying is continue with our, going through the questions and so forth today?
But we, we'll, we'll only vote after Chairman indicates whether you want to move forward with, after hearing all the evidence, evidence, all the reports, do you want to move forward? You'll have to say yes or no, and then there'll be a vote. If you decide after you hear from everybody that there's a need to update some documentation or record keeping, whatever those reports may be, then you can table it at that point.
Okay, thank you. I think that, that sounds like probably a good way to go.
Otherwise, you're going to be in the, potentially in the dark as what all the concerns are. I'd rather have you understand those before you decide to move forward.
Right. Okay, thank you.
Sir? All right, we want to proceed? Or, uh, we are here from our staff reports, staff reports?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. The proponent is requesting to establish a new subdivision on 32.5 acres of land at the address listed. The site is proposed to have 226 single-family homes, lots created utilizing a residential plan unit development standard, RPUD, requirements of which can be found in Chapter 1177 of the Codified Ordinance. Note: A conditional use was granted on 9/20/22, case number 2022-001-000-88, for proposed residential plan unit development in a residential multi-household low-density district. Zoning. I have listed some of the zoning requirements for the residential plan unit development district for the board's use in further reference. Section 1175.05 for development states, "Actual development shall substantially conform with the approved site plan, development plan. Any proposed deviations that do not substantially conform to the approved site development plan shall be resubmitted to planning commissioner, city staff for approval or variations. Buildings shall have their officially assigned address, house number displayed facing the street." 1177.06 for lot requirements states as follows: "A maximum density shall not be more than seven acres per unit. B, minimum lot size for four acres shall be required for planned developments. Minimum open spaces shall be 30% of the total area, exclusive of public and private streets. D, a minimum of 100-foot frontage upon public streets shall be required." 1177.07, yard requirement shall be as follows: "Minimum front yard setbacks, number one. A minimum setback from the public street right away to a building shall be 30 feet. The minimum setback from the edge of a private street to the front of the building shall be 20 feet. The minimum distance between buildings containing two or more dwelling units shall be 20 feet. Between two single-household dwelling units shall be 12 and between a single-household dwelling and a two-household dwelling shall be 15. C, the minimum side and rear yard setback shall, between buildings, in abutting side or rear lot line shall be 20 feet." Zoning continued. 11, oop, I missed a number. 1177.08, building requirements. The building requirements for properties in RPUD shall be as follows: "The maximum building height shall be 35 for all principal lots. The maximum building height for accessory buildings shall be regulated under the underlying zoning district requirements." My findings: I've listed my findings, 1 through 11, not only for the board's use, but for the applicant's use to help dial in what we need to see. Number one: The plan submitted indicates a mixture of cluster lots and single condominium homes. Specifically, the information calls for 142 cluster lots and 84 single condominium homes. The plans also delineate a single-family lot detail on page SP002, of which indicates a proposed setback and implies this design is typical of all lots proposed. Clarification is needed assuring the proposed cluster lots are not confused with, confused with the cluster home regulations of Chapter 1179 of the Alaria Codified Ordinance. If so, a separate conditional use will be required per Section 1150.04e of the residential multi-household low-density district requirements. Number two: Page SP002 of the plans has a hand-drawn pink line with the comment, "14-foot setback for condominium-style homes." This contradicts a single-family lot detail on page SP002, of which indicates a 20-foot setback from the front property line as required by Code, Section 1177.07a2. Much additional information needed. I'm going to pause here for the board's use. What they're asking for is a 14-foot setback from the private road. That is not a whole lot of room to park a car. The average car is about 15 feet. A truck could be anywhere from 18 to 20. That means, in theory, this truck or car is going to be sticking out in the road. Just food for thought. Number three: The paperwork submitted lacks a proposed front, side, rear, or building height. Information is needed assuring the proposed is, in fact, for single-family homes, as the plans depict. If the intent is to construct a single-family home in groupings of two, three, or four units, this would alter the minimum setback requirements between structures per Section 1177.07b. Much more information needed. Number four: The plans depict a proposed side yard setback of five feet on page SP002, single-family lot detail. Then on page SP001 indicates a side yard setback of 5' 5" inches. Per Code, Section 1177.07b requires 12 feet maintained between single-family homes, i.e., six feet from each property lines. Revised drawings needed indicating what is actually proposed. Number five: Plans submitted depict a westernly portion of the subdivision with, with the lot location numbered in home counts, 1 through 95, and a proposed home orientation on SP000. The plans note on SP001 states to match line sheet SP002 as this will be continuation of the easterly subdivision layout. Page SP002 lacks the proposed lot locations, numbers, home count, home orientation, so the review cannot be completed. Note: Page SK001 does depict the remaining easterly subdivision, remaining easterly subdivision, but does not match page SP 001. Number six, the rear yard setback indicated on page SP 002 states 14-foot setback per code section 117707B requires 20 be maintained. I reiterated that because a variance would be needed. Number seven, a detailed parking plan is not indicated, as required per section 1174.04D, as page SP 01 depicts a parking area at building number 142. More information needed indicating compliance with chapter 1175 Parking and Screening Regulations. Number eight, several lots, 97 and 138, are configured in such a manner that the side yard but a rear yard, number 96, 139, and 140. Per code section 117707C requires a minimum 20-foot be maintained for this particular scenario. The variance request asks for an 11-foot setback and is assumed to imply to the entire subdivision, though not specifically indicated. It should also be noted that per page SP 001 highlighted, that's a different page in here with the same number, but it's highlighted, the plan states a 20-foot setback will be maintained, thus indicating compliance. Clarity is needed. Number nine, the variance application contradicts the subdivision plans as the variance request asks for three specific variances and are as follows, 11 feet between multifamily buildings, 11 feet between single-family buildings, and ask for an 11-foot rear yard setback. As the plans submitted do not depict any two-family units, it is unclear as to why this is being requested. Much additional information is needed specifying the locations of the proposed two-family homes, indicating what type of homes are to be built, two-family to two-family, two-family to single-family, et cetera, as this will greatly affect the setback regulations of 117707B mentioned herein. Number 10, the minimum space, open space requirement shall be 30% of the total area exclusive of public and private streets per earlier codified ordinance section 117606C. The plans submitted appears to consider the adjacent abutting acreage, 163, of which is not incorporated into the proposed subdivision of 32.4 as part of the open area. Much more information needed, possible variance required from section 1177.06C. 11, I am unaware if the water department, engineering department, or fire department, or wastewater pollution control departments have been, had had the opportunity to review and respond as required per section 117303, and will rely on the planning commission secretary for response. Recommendation, I recommend that multiple petitions be denied as the appropriate information provided, as discussed in past meeting with the applicant. Once provided, the appropriate departments can offer further comments or recommendations for the board's use. My memo is a two-bird, it's a kill. It's covering the variance requests and the proposed subdivision request. Based on the information herein, it contradicts itself. It's not ready. Thank you.
Would engineering and fire like to weigh in on this?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In regards to the overall development, some, I have some minor things to point out. I do have some major things as well. But just a couple of simple things. Well, one simple thing is, there's no street names for the, listed on the preliminary plans. That is something that needs to be identified. The roadway is private, so it will require homeowners association as part of that. It's shown as being 24 feet wide, which means there's no parking allowed on any of the roads, which leads to a question as far as, you know, where do visitors park that come to these properties? I think that's something that should be addressed or at least looked at as a concern. Like most private subdivisions, sidewalks are typically not installed. Just some, another, something I would point out as far as being concerned with that. There's no, there's, the plans do not show any street lighting. Once again, something that needs to be addressed one way or the other. There is no typical pavement section provided with the plans, which would depict curbs. I do believe the developer intends to put curbs in, but it's not shown on the plans. In the past, one of the big items that we've been dealing with as far as engineering is compensatory storage down in the floodplain area. The developer had provided us with estimated quantities at this time. We do not have certified engineered stamp quantities. If that was the only thing I was waiting on, I'd probably be able to work with them. But further, I looked into the plans. There's more issues. I, I just created more questions. The grading plan for the, for the development that's provided so far is incomplete. It brings up a lot of questions. There's some houses or properties that are built literally on cliffs. There's houses that have separation between two houses of three-feet elevation separation or four-feet self-separation. When you have a 12-foot side yard and three to four feet of separation, that usually leads to issues one way or the Another, another item that I looked for that was not shown or called out in any way were easements for the preliminary plans. Not all the development has taken place on this, on the developer's property itself. We have had discussions in the past in regards to easements. So we will need easements shown on these plans, not only for access, but for utilities. Typically, you know, once again, you have a 24-foot right-of-way. Typically outside that, you're going to want to have easements for electric, gas. We can't cram all the city utilities within a 24-foot roadway. So I would, there would need to be some easement looked at. The lift station that was, the plans do not really depict the location of a lift station. My opinion at least that all water and sewer be the city's responsibility to maintain in the future. That's, you know, we are in that. We have the licensing. We have the expertise in that. It's something that we should control. So if, you know, a lift station will need to be put in. With that comes maintenance. We need to have parking lot for our crew to be able to park and maintain what they need to maintain. What was shown on the plans is very, just basically a dot. And there's a number of, a number of other things, you know, in regards to the left-hand, the left-hand turn lane that will be installed on Golf Road. Developer does have it in the plans. It looks adequate, but I also see complications when it comes to the existing utilities that are out there, as well as the ditch that flows adjacent to Golf Road. That, if you impact that, you're, we're going to need Army Corps permits. We're going to need EPA permits. We'll probably need those anyways, but we're definitely going to need those if we impact the floodway. So there's a number of issues I have at this time, and I think some of the, you know, the redesigning will bring additional issues as well, but it's something we can work out. But at this time, I don't think the plans are ready to be approved.
Thank you. Fire, would you like to add?
Okay. At this point, we realize that it's an early phase and that we have been provided the documents. We see discrepancies amongst those documents that we have received even amongst, you know, our, our membership here. Fire department looks at, in the early stage, three key areas. Looking at water supply. We use that in order to fight fires. And while not addressed for the developer, that would be, we're looking at a looped hydrant system, spaced less than 400 feet apart for hydrants. Providing the water flow, that'll meet the need. And we're looking at 1,000 gallons per minute for every home to fight a fire. So. Lot size, chief building official had mentioned that you have multifamily or at least a use group that we don't know clarity on the height of the building. If you are approaching above 30-foot height building, our aerial apparatus by code, the road has to be a minimum of 26 feet wide. The 11-foot separation between buildings, that's a variance I believe you're looking for. I just would advise the commission that as you set these rules, that any developments in the future will also want to utilize a similar approach. From a firefighting standpoint, when fires and the way the materials burn, exposures are at great risk. The big one will be accessibility. The existing road that comes into the property will be lengthened into the 142 homes towards the back. I have to defer to the engineer as far to the design of this road, the grading, the curves, the radiuses to turn as we loop around this eclipse-looking layout. We have a 72,000-pound vehicle that's going to be driving these. That's, has to navigate, serpentine through the, through the development. We've already talked about parking issues from both the chief building official and the engineer. The tower is 10 feet wide. If someone is visiting a property there, we already know that the driveways are being reduced to where there may not be any parking conceivably within the driveway. So where will these individuals park? We don't have a plan. From the past, I have seen where developments exist even during the construction. We anticipate in the, required the vehicles to be beyond the construction site so we have full access. But we know that they stop way short, effectively obstructing the road. And if the tower were to be used in a fire with its outriggers, the current one is an 18-foot footprint, and the new one that we're soon to get will be 20-foot. So you are, anytime you would set that up, you are obstructing anything beyond it. The reason why you don't prefer roads that are 20 feet is that when you have one at 26 or better, we can still drive around the truck to get beyond that and pull enough vehicles into the area. But where the ladder sits and it's set up, that, that closes everything. One, two, when I want to mention, when you hear the, the expression of fire access road, you think of fire lane. And they put one in, Mark, I don't know if you have one, that kind of comes off the hill a little bit south of the, the other entrance. And they want to put a 20-foot road called a fire access road that'll loop up to the end of a cul-de-sac. Do you have that on the, on the, he's not here. I don't know. If you can bring that up. That has some elevation changes. Again, the engineer was wanting, you know, we're, by grade, the tower cannot handle a 10% grade or more. They max it out at 10%. So as you, you see that one come into the, on the lower south end into that cul-de-sac. Yes, we do have a fire access road, and its elevation isn't clear. So we would want more detail on that. When you, again, hear the name fire access, I wanted to share the definition. That's in the Ohio Fire Code. And it's a road or other passageway developed to allow the passage of fire apparatus. A fire lane is not necessarily intended for vehicle traffic other than fire apparatus, and shall not be interpreted to mean a residential and/or a public street. So this, this road is exclusive to, for fire use. It has to be maintained in all weathers, and has to be of a surface that will support the weight of the vehicle. And the earlier codified ordinance is 1112.11 will be talking about streets, and you can reference that. Engineer mentioned about street names. There was not, no, no highlighting of those for the, and that will be required so there, there's not a duplication with other streets in this, it's named, which we already have a number of them in the city. That leads to some confusion sometimes.
I also have.
And to see what else, the other in closing, at the Fire Prevention Bureau, we withhold support of this project until required information is submitted.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Thank you very much. Appreciate that.
Mr. Chairman, I also have one legal concern. When the original project went through, and we had a multiple grouping of lots that we consolidated, I believe, the four. Part of the promise I received from the attorney for the golf course, which is required, and I've talked to these other folks here, the golf, the developers, is there has to be easements because there's, there'd be ability to cross paths between the properties because one's a residential development, the other is a golf course. Those were promised to me to be submitted when we got to this stage, and I have not seen anything. And I think that would concern the golf course that if we built this without those, if we allowed the preliminary plans to go through without the easements in place, we may have created a problem much bigger than anybody would want to solve. They could be taken care of just by putting them in place at the beginning. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Jim.
Darryl, Mr. Chair, through you, and also to reiterate what the fire marshal indicated. My report stops at number 11. I honestly could have kept going. I purposely stopped because it just isn't ready. The topic of fire separation between buildings is an absolute concern for me. I didn't put that in my memo because I wasn't sure what type of units we're dealing with, single-family to two-family, et cetera. They are requesting a variance to be, I think, five feet, five inches from the property line when code wants six per zoning. Our local residential code of Ohio says five feet. That is not a whole lot of variance between the foundation being out of square. If the guys on site pour it a little bit cockeyed, you could have a portion of this building that is less than five feet from the property line, creating an absolute problem from a fire rating perspective from the residential code. Once this is revised and resubmitted for the applicant's use of myself, I will revisit it, and I may include this comment for future reference for the board to consider. So just FYI.
Thank you, Darryl. Okay. Hearing that, would you guys, would you like to table this to gather and supply the information that's requested by the building department and the staff and engineer, or fire, fire department and engineering staff?
Obviously, I just want to make a comment though, just to, because we've been at this process for a while. From an engineering standpoint and some of the stuff that the fire marshal and so forth brought up, first of all, it's all, they're all single-family homes. Maximum height's going to be under 30 feet. So there's no reason for anything other conventional fire engine up there. Pavement width is 24 feet, which I think meets most codes for conventional fire access. The, but a lot, I guess what I'm saying is cut to the chase here, is that your code, and we do a lot of these, so we go in a lot of municipalities, at the preliminary plan stage, a lot of what you're asking for, most people don't ask for, that, that stuff comes up at the design stage when you do the actual engineering. So, and I understand that your ordinance reads a little different, and reading through the ordinance is kind of harder to determine what's required at the preliminary stage, what's required at the detailed stage, and it kind of, kind of crossover. So all the things we discussed here, we're already down the road on that, so to speak. We already know the answers. We've kind of, we've been roughing out, trying to get a jump on this. We started preliminary engineering in anticipation that this plan, kind of the way it is, is ultimately going to get preliminary plan approval. A lot of good, you know, comments were made here. I understand Mr. Farkas' problem because there is, unfortunately, this most recent submittal there went through a number of hands, and a couple of people added some, changed a few things, added some things prior to it actually getting to him. So there's some ambiguities relates to that. There's nothing here today that we can't, haven't already addressed internally or can't put on paper here pretty quickly. So we want to make sure we hit, you know, we hit the big issues. I guess at this point, it makes sense for us to request table it to the next meeting. That seems like short term, but we've already got the answers for this. We just need to put it in, in, in front of Mr. Farkas and engineering and everyone to see that we've, we're addressing those. There are no multifamily units proposed at this point. And just, there's one, one thing too. I think there's a little confusion, Mr. Farkas, that one where they're showing a 14-foot setback, that's actually a rear setback in that lower area where we're calling it, where we're addressing and calling it as 47 single condominium homes. Those, again, are going to be detached units. The only difference between those and the ones up on the top of the hill, the majority of those, those are going to be on individual, these simple lots. The ones down below are going to be on condominium-owned land, but everything else being equal, they're still single-family units. And again, less than 30 feet tall. The setback is still going to be 20 feet from the street. We're putting in private street. The length of the driveways will be 20 feet because they're, they're setback 20 feet or more from the curb. Street lights, absolutely, we want those. We will be We will be talking to the planning department to see what our options are, because we prefer to do those, we do them in concert with the electric company, where they actually maintain them, you know, after they're, after they're installed, but they have certain types of units that they want us to use in terms of the holes and so forth. So those are all detailed things that we would be developing down the road as we go forward into the design stage, but as far as locating them and say we're going to have light, we are. Ultimately, the final determination where they go is going to be up to the electric company, because they give us the locations. We give them our plan, they say, here's where we want to put the streetlights, here's how we're going to connect them up, and this is the unit you're going to use. So those types of things. So typically, like I say, I don't think, oh, and the other thing was the grade going out onto Golf Road. Right now, we're proposing around eight to nine percent maximum. So we're, the majority of it's eight percent, and depending upon the most extreme way you measure it, there might be a cross slope that reaches nine percent, but everything is well, is under ten percent. We understood from the get-go that was a concern, and also the radius of the turn. That's why we spent a lot of time kind of laying out that connection there, so that you'd be able to, to make them have that access, so. Anyways, I don't want to take up any more of your time.
Thank, thank you very much. So we, so we will, we, I think we, is, is there any more questions? Is there anyone from the, the board staff?
I just had a quick question for Mr. Farkas. Mr. Farkas, I'm sorry. It seems like a lot of the questions that are raised here are not even necessarily in those, those real specifics, but the general idea of having this many homes clustered this many, this close together with this much of a setback, that's not going to provide adequate parking and that, is that stuff that we would normally expect to be submitted at this, at this stage?
Mr. Chair, no. Actually, that was taken care of in multiple meetings well in advance of the submittal. Unfortunately, this is just hastily done, in my opinion. It's a bit frustrating from a review standpoint of having these meetings in advance, going through all the things we need to see, and have this submitted to be completely not-to-scale, not dimensionized, highlighted drawings and notations. It is absolutely not what is typically submitted by other developers.
Thank you, Darryl.
So hearing all this, you'd like to table it to a future, future date, future planning commission? Yep? Okay, that being said, is that it? All right, we'll table that till the next, till the next meeting, and do we adjourn, uh, close the meeting?
Move to adjourn?
Yeah, sorry. We, I'll, I'll look for a motion to, to adjourn.
So move.
So move. Can I get a second?
Or do we need to, or I guess we need to-
Mr. Ondurk. All right. Okay. All right, thank you very much, guys. We'll see you next month.